Okay, good evening and welcome to the December 20th, 2022 Board of Selectmen's Meeting. Before we begin the meeting, could we please have a moment of silence for all those suffering here, the Ukraine people suffering from COVID, personal problems? Okay, on the agenda this evening, we have public service announcements, we have two public hearings, one filed by Maximus Enterprises LLC doing business as Tudi Quanti for a new off-premise package store liquor license for wines and malt beverages. We have a request, an application from Hamilton Rod and Gun Club for a change of license type from club to general on-premise for the premises located at 24 Hamilton Road. Then we will have the town administrator's update, department reports from water and sewer and fire. Then we have several requests for appointments to rumors to mention till we get to them. Then we have a request for a live entertainment license for Deep Root Stillery USA located at 59 Main Street. Also a request to accept furniture donation from a closing nonprofit office in Worcester. Okay, so, public service announcements. Ian?
Just thank the Fire Department and everybody involved for the Santa Parade. I think everybody enjoyed that. It was really good. So, while we have a bunch of them here, too. But other than that, good.
Chase?
Just wanted to wish all the residents Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
I also want to say Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and also, we won't be meeting, so Happy New Year. On the notices, there is a first-day hike on the Riverlands, 1:00 p.m., New Year's Day. So, there's more information on the website. Tom Chamberlain put it up. Jamie?
Nothing to add. Happy holidays to everybody.
Okay. Let's see, we have two minutes before.
I should have come up with something.
I know. A song or a dance.
I don't think I'd put anybody through that.
Okay. Well, why don't we go down to E, consideration and possible action on the confirmation and appointment of Robert Lucier to the Municipal Affording Housing Trust Committee for term to expire December 19th, 2023.
So, I interviewed several people. As you know, for the Municipal Housing Trust, the town administrator has three recommendations for appointment. The select board has a member, planning has a member, and I think CPC has a member. Tonight, we have the selectmen's appointment as well as the three of mine. We also still have to add the other committee appointments, which we can do next time. This likely will not have its first meeting until, I believe, February, but Jean Bouman will start getting information out to all people. Mr. Lucier did interview and is certainly qualified with his background in real estate.
Okay, any questions?
He's here.
Do you want to say anything?
No, I'm just happy to be back to the town of Sturbridge.
Thank you. Case, can we have a motion on that?
Sure. I will move to confirm and appoint Rob Lucier to the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Committee for a term to expire December 19th, 2023.
Second that.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay. I see it is 6:35. We do have a public hearing. Michelle, did you give the notices to Mary to read? She's not here.
On the first page.
Notification is hereby given that an application has been filed by Maximus Enterprises LLC, DBA Tudi Quanti, for a new off-premises package store liquor licenses for wines and malt beverages with cordial liquors at the premises currently located at 538 Main Street, Fistale, Mass. 01518. With the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen in accordance with MGL CH 138, a public hearing will be held on Monday, December 19th, 2022, at 6:35 p.m. This hearing will be held at Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturbridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass. 01566.
Okay, Mike? Would you just like to give us a little explanation?
Sure. So, I've been granted this past year four separate one-day licenses and for wine tastings, which I think we've gone over extremely well and we've managed extremely well. We were given 10 licenses for next year, private wine tastings as well. And to supplement that, our business model, what we want to do is we want to be able to offer wines to our customers as they come in, is almost like a one-stop shop. When they come in for food, charcuterie, they may be able to purchase a bottle of wine. So, that's kind of the concept that we're going after.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Placella? No, your application is complete. So, is there a motion then?
To approve or to close?
Or disapprove?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Oh, we have to... Oh, wait a minute, first of all, is there anyone? Forgive me. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to say anything? Okay, motion to close public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, good luck, Mike.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much. Merry Christmas.
Well, we need a motion on the actual...
Oh, application. Took a cold pill.
I think we'll get you, sir. I think Chase has a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the application filed by Maximus Enterprises LLC, DBA Tudi Quanti, for a new off-premises package store liquor license for wines and malt beverages for 538 Main Street, Fistale, Mass.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
All right, thank you all.
Good luck with this.
Good luck. If I know that, I might have imagined and added some other stuff to the agenda. That's a pun.
Okay. Okay, next, we have a application filed by Hamilton Rod and Gun Club for a change of license type from club to general on-premise. This is for the premises located at 24 Hamilton Road, Sturbridge. Do you have the notice?
Notification is hereby given that an application has been filed by Hamilton Rod and Gun Club for a change of license type from club to general on-premises at the premises currently located at 24 Hamilton Road, Sturbridge, Mass. 01566, with the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen in accordance with MGL CH 138. A public hearing will be held on Monday, December 19th, 2022, at 6:35 p.m. This hearing will be held at Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturbridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass. 01566.
Okay, good evening. Would you give your name for the record, please?
Hi, I'm Lawrence Boucher from Hamilton Rod and Gun Club. I'm the bar manager there.
Okay, would you explain what it is you want to do?
So, we've had a club license for pretty much a long time. And when we met in July to get one-day permits, we thought it would make more sense for the club to move from a club to a general license because we are having more events where we're open to the public. So, it would make it easier for us where individuals don't have to sign in as guests to the club and so on and so forth. So, that's kind of why we thought it would make more sense for us to move from club to general.
Okay, questions from the board? I did notice on the entity vote for the board of directors, it's voted to authorize. Somebody's name should be there.
Okay, that would be mine. I'm sorry if I didn't put it on there.
Oh, okay. But other than that, everything's copacetic. Okay, no questions from the board? Okay, any comments from the audience? Okay, motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay. Now, motion on the application?
Sure, I will move to amend the application, amend per the request of the application filed by the Hamilton Rod and Gun Club for a change of license type from club to general on-premises for the premises located at 24 Hamilton Road.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you for coming in.
Have a Happy New Year. Merry Christmas. Okay, next, we have town administrator's update.
So, I have two items. First, the Tantasca Regional and Union 61 Memory Indem came in looking for a representative from the board to sit on the budget as the budget liaison. And I do not know if the board wanted to make a motion on that tonight or...
Think about it.
Or wait till next time.
Yeah.
You want to wait till next time, put it on the agenda in January, or...
I don't mind doing it if there's no takers.
Oh, no, you may.
They're not fighting me for that one. Okay.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion then to appoint Chase?
Yeah, I will move to appoint Chase as the representative for the, is this the Burgess budget?
No.
Tantasca and Union 61.
Tantasca and Union 61 liaison from the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, discussion, all in favor?
And secondly, when I came on board, there had been a lot of discussion on converting our streetlights to LED, which is something we do need to do for efficiency, quality of lighting, and financially. We had a company that had been coming in, trying to sort of pitch us on this, and I put together a little bit of a memo comparing our two options, which is to go with an outside company and privatize by purchasing the lights, having a maintenance contract, and running it that way. And I did email this to you all today. Did you print a copy of it? Four of them. Can you just run and print two copies? I sent it in an email today. And so, we had the option of buying and privatizing, basically owning the lights, and then that company does the maintenance, has a maintenance contract, we work with them. Our other option is to have National Grid continue to own the lights, we continue to rent the lights, they do the conversion to LED, and they handle all the maintenance. I've spoken with town administrators and town managers from different towns who've done both. I hear positive and negative about the privatizing. It just depends on who you talk to and what their experience has been. The privatizing would save us approximately $1.5 million over 20 years in lighting savings. So, there's a significant savings. That is based on an, after an estimated cost of about $45,000 to purchase all of our lights from National Grid. Grid did not confirm that cost. That was an estimate of about $100 a fixture, which may be a little bit low. There's some incentive money out there. It would take us about two and a half years to, sort of the return on the investment of buying the lights, it would take about two and a half years of savings would get eaten up in the actual purchasing of the lights, for example. So, it's a decent amount of money saved over 20 years. The option of going with Grid, can I make a copy of my notes? Thanks. I'm trying to load up my notes. The option of purchase, oh, I wasn't too far off. The option of going with Grid, Grid gives us a one-time incentive of $25,000 or $30,000 off the top, and then we save over the 20 years about $600,000. So, we still yield a shit savings, but about $1 million less over 20 years. Heather and I went back and forth on this. Straight money, we would privatize. But the concern I have is that there's a little bit of a gamble on service and maintenance contracts. We know that these companies do it successfully. They've only done 18 communities in Rhode Island, Massachusetts, the particular company that I'm speaking with now. They have done this in 13 different states and some in Canada. My concern if we privatize this is the service end of it. If a light breaks, we have to call that company. That company, if a pole has gone down, has to coordinate with Grid to get the pole back up, and then the light has to come. If you lose two or three lights or four lights in a storm, and other communities that they're doing, that have the maintenance contract also lose lights in that same storm, you know, we're sort of at the whim of a private company. I guess the ultimate question for Heather and I was, do we want to be in the streetlight business or not? In the end, I'm recommending that we don't. I usually am all about saving the money, and $1 million over 20 years is a nice amount of money. We're not losing money, if you will, by going with Grid. We're still saving $600,000. It's just not as much of a savings. I'm just concerned about the gamble, and I think the company's reputable at speaking with us, and we certainly can bid it and look at other companies. But in the end, we're going to rely on a private contractor to be able to get the lights, to replace them. We're going to be able to, we have to rely on a private contractor on a weekend or during a storm to get people out. I just think that there is, and there's governing with the DPU, of course, over National Grid. Now, we do run the risk Grid could raise its rental rates. I mean, we're, again, under DPU oversight, but nonetheless, you know, I can't guarantee that savings is going to stay because the rental prices might go up a little bit. But in the end, it's ultimately a policy decision for the board, is do we want the direct savings? The trade-off is we're a little bit of uncertainty about the service, or do we want to go with sort of the $600,000 savings and have the guarantee of service? My recommendation is to stay with National Grid for the simple fact that streetlights are so important to the public, and when streetlights are out three, four, five, six days or a week, it is bothersome to people. That's my recommendation. If the board chooses to go the other way and go with the financial, the higher financial savings, we certainly can make it work. But I think at this point, it needs to come to you all for a final decision.
Okay, comments, questions?
Yes, so, right before you started, Rob, and when Robert Reed was here, we had a gentleman come in and he gave like a two-hour presentation to us. And he, is that the...
Yes.
That is, okay. I, we kind of got shuffled around. I mean, $1.5 million is a lot of saving. Did you talk to the other communities that he represents in Massachusetts? And do they have any issues with, like, service?
So, I didn't speak directly to the ones he represents. I did speak to one community who has it, who said, oh, if I had to do it all, it was like this when I got here, I would never do this, because I sometimes have to wait days and days and days to get a light.
Okay.
I spoke to other communities who says, oh, it just works fine. A light breaks, they call a maintenance company, I don't have to worry about it. So, I've gotten the mixed reviews, and I just, the money is tempting. The money's very tempting. It's just the uncertainty that Heather and I both have some concerns about.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the money's over 20 years, too.
Right.
So, it sounds like it's more than it is.
Yeah.
Right, when you spread it out like that.
They had brought up the ability to add Wi-Fi and all kinds of other things to these fixtures when they installed them. Was that things that were included in those prices?
There are different options. So, this option that we had had photocell controls, we could upgrade, and it'd be more expensive to do all the Wi-Fi options and whatnot. So, there were higher options with, obviously would yield a little less in savings. The option we went with was photocell timing, which would give us optimal electrical energy savings, might not have all, as much of the fancy equipment. And with Grid, we're looking apples to apples at what, you know, what upgrades I was looking at. I just compared an apples-to-apples comparison of them.
And are these, if we were to hire a third-party contractor, I'm blanking on the name of the other company.
Real time.
Yeah. So, are those prevailing wage jobs?
You know, they did not indicate if they were. I would imagine the maintenance contract may have to be because of Grid.
Yeah, so, if they're dealing with prevailing wage jobs, National Grid is going to have a workforce lined up that they don't necessarily have.
Yep.
So, if you're kind of coming in and you're looking for electricians, good luck right now. So, I tend to be conservative about that.
And I will tell you, it's, we are at the whims of the workforce that they can get. We're also at the whims of supply chain on lights. That's another concern of how much stockpile is any maintenance company going to have compared to what National Grid's going to have?
Now, do we currently have a problem with losing a lot of streetlights, and how is National Grid about replacing them now?
We don't really have a big issue. We have about 440 lights around town. I don't hear many complaints about it. I think Grid is pretty responsive to our needs right now. I mean, we go battle with them on some billing issues, but other than battling with them on billing issues, we seem to do fine from a maintenance standpoint. I also think that when we look at, you know, when massive storms are moving in, Grid can, you know, Grid can call in everybody from all over the country and have them ready. My real concern a lot of times is the coordination if a couple poles go down, having to make sure that the pole gets up, that the light company can get to us. And if you had a major storm in central Massachusetts, and we're competing with three or four other communities. And while I'm not against giving a company an opportunity, 18 communities in Massachusetts isn't all that many in New England to be used to our weather and our, the system that can blow through and the types of weather that we do face, the unpredictability of it. So, I just, you know, the gentleman's wonderful, and he's done nothing but answer every question I've had. They seem like a great company. I'm just not sure, Heather and I just don't feel confident that without a dedicated person here to, let's say, follow, okay, we have lights down in a storm, who's calling, who's coordinating? Are we responsible for the coordination? What happens if somebody goes out of business? The streetlights aren't something we can go without. There are certain services in life that I'm just not sure you want privatized, and I don't, lighting in the streets is one that I'm concerned about. Some cases, privatization is absolutely a good idea.
Well, and National Grid is a private company. And so, it is like, it's a weird, this whole area is a weird, no, but it is strange. There's advantages and disadvantages to how National Grid operates, but it is, it just has so much structure relatively.
And it has the DPU regulation that they used to dealing with that and the oversight of a public utility.
They still be DPU reg...
Yeah, but, you know, Grid would get a lot of trouble if they don't. They don't have full control over it, over the price increases.
Okay, anything else? Somebody want to make a motion, or do you want to take it under consideration?
Should we wait for Mary, maybe?
Yeah, why don't we take it under consideration? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's a big enough issue, I think, that I just wanted to get it in front of you to think about.
Is it possible to get National Grid to confirm that price without us saying we actually want to do it?
Well, they know we're looking at it. No, I have been pretty open with Grid. Yeah, I can try to confirm that price on the $45,000.
It's an estimate, that's all there is.
Yeah, I can get them to confirm that price. I do have to move relatively quickly because sometime in '23, the incentives to convert over are going to go away. So, we'll, maybe for the next meeting. I'll see if I can get a little more information on the actual cost of those lights, and I'll talk to the gentleman at real time as well and see if I can get a little bit more about the maintenance contracts, see how much more information I can get on this. But I just want to get this on your radar.
Thank you.
Okay, did, Michelle, did you give Robert another paper for announcements?
I think we'll wait till the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that, we'll just wait till Mary's here on that, too, since her name's on it.
No problem.
Okay, and that's it from me. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah. I know we're in Hanukkah this week, so...
Yes.
Safe holidays to all.
I think there's like 14 holidays. Kwanzaa and...
So, happy holidays to all.
Whatever you celebrate.
Whatever you celebrate, enjoy it.
Okay, does anyone else have anything for Robin? Okay, next, we have department reports, water and sewer, Shane. Good evening.
Good evening. How you doing?
Good.
Jump right into it. You have the reports for October, September, and November. Came in late today, because I just finished it today. Any questions on those, I'll take, but plants are running well. There's really nothing out of the ordinary. Water flows have come back down after being up all summer, basically due to the really dry weather. And honestly, I believe the new RV Pop 2 is using quite a bit of water on a daily basis, but that's starting to taper off. So, if you have any questions, I'll take those.
Questions?
Nothing.
How are the fire hydrants?
Fire hydrants have all been winterized. One of them is out of service, and it'll remain out of service. And I had a conversation with the chief. We just fixed that hydrant in like June, and it lasts like three, four months, and it gets whacked every time it's over by the antique shop. We haven't dug it out, taken out yet because there's 160 pounds of pressure over there, and I got to shut down everything in order to do the work. Obviously, I don't want to be shutting down the shopping plaza right before Christmas. So, it's not a public safety issue or anything, so we'll probably dig it up and fix it, remove it in the spring.
Okay, now, where is it?
Right over by the antique shop, right before the Walmart Plaza.
Oh, okay.
So, and there's a couple more hydrants right in the general vicinity. We fixed that thing five times already. So, we're just going to remove that, we size out. The rest of the hydrants were all winterized, and they all have flags on them, too, for snow plowing.
Okay, anything from the board?
Where do we stand with the pipe repair?
So, I was going to bring that up. The one on Route 20 is scheduled for this Thursday. That'll happen Thursday, and then there's another one that needs to be made on Hall Road, and that's scheduled for December 27th. So, and speaking of that, there were some questions on how long the liner will last. They can be good up to 50 years.
Oh, that's awesome.
So, we'll put this repair in, and then once the weather warms up, we'll do some more investigating, and hopefully, we'll be able to reline the rest of that pipe and not have to dig it up. We did get an estimate, an engineering cost, if we did have to do that, and I didn't dig into what it entailed, because I think it might have been an upgrade to station two, we're looking at like $4 million. So, if we can reline it, we're going to be able to save a bunch of money and get another 50 years out of that pipe. So, but we won't know until we go in there in the spring. We'll be doing some meter reading after the first of the year. As we wind up the end of the year, I went through our database today. We have 100% compliance on water and over 99% compliance on sewer, and we have one more round of PFOS testing to do in January, and then we'll be done with that also. I don't see the PFOS in the drinking water as being an issue. There was a couple small hits, which will probably trigger some manual testing, but I don't expect anything to really change, which is really good news. Besides that, we're just doing a lot of maintenance on the plants right now, you know, we can't do any work in the streets, and that's about all I have for you.
Okay, nothing else from the board?
No.
Okay, thank you, Shane.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Yes, you too. Okay, next, we have the Fire Department. Good evening, Chief.
You have the reports for the Fire Department for October and November. Couple of items of note. You will see my next set of reports. We have changed our records management system, not through choice of ours, but our current, now former, records management system was bought out by another company. So, the reports will look significantly different next time around. I will include a cover memo to give descriptions of what the new reports are and how to interpret them, but this will be the last time you see the reports in the format that you have The Fire Department was awarded $60,000 state legislative earmark for the purchase of a new command vehicle. Thank you to Senator Ryan Fatman and Representative Todd Smola for their work on that. In addition to that, we just recently received word that we were rewarded $10,000, a little over $10,000 from the Department of Fire Services to help us with the purchase of firefighting equipment, protective firefighting equipment. The deputy chief is working on those specs now. So, those two awards were very welcomed. Call-wise, we're trending about the same as last year. I think the biggest note of concern that I have is the overlapping or multiple simultaneous calls that we're experiencing. This is not a new trend, but it seems to be a trend that is increasing. The problem we have is that once we commit our crew to the first call, we aren't able to staff the second call, and we're using mutual aid more and more for that. We're not alone in that. Other communities are also experiencing the same kind of situation, but it is a concern that... that I am, I am watching very carefully. We did have our annual Santa parade yesterday. I'd like to thank all of the residents that came out and supported us, waves and cheers and big smiles. The firefighters did a fantastic job and I'd like to send a special thanks out to Bill Bardley and Jude McDonald for their help with that as well. We couldn't do it without them, so. That's it for my, my reports. I'm happy to answer any questions about call volume or call trends or
Any questions?
Do you see the overlapping calls at similar times, like 5 o'clock rush hour, everybody's getting in a car accident kind of deal or?
You know, there's no, there isn't a rhyme to the reason, there isn't. And I really looked hard to see if there was, but there really isn't. And again, we're not the only ones experiencing it that way. It just seems like we'll go a period of time where we'll have, you know, a lull and then we'll get two or three calls back to back to back right away. And not long enough back to back where we can clear one to get to the second one. They're happening right at the same time, so.
Okay, anything else on the reports? Okay, anything else, Chief, before we?
Nope, not on, not on the monthly stuff.
Okay, so the next action item is possible action on the appointment of Joseph Toldorian as a full-time firefighter, paramedic, effective January 1st, 2023. His rate of pay will be consistent with provisions of Article 7 of the agreement between the Town of Sturbridge and Teamsters Local 170. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Joe is currently one of our part-time firefighters. He is attending the Cal-Vall firefighting recruit academy in Leicester, about a third of the way through now. Just got the first progress report, doing very, very well. And I see no, no concerns. Joe's a nationally registered EMT. And he, when he graduates, he'll be certified to the Fire 1, Fire 2 level. And after we get him through this part of his training, we will be looking for a paramedic program to get him enrolled in. So as the chair said, his appointment will be effective January 1st, 2023, and his rate of pay will be consistent with the collective bargaining agreement currently in place.
Okay, questions from the board? Okay, would you like to say anything?
Just happy to be here, happy to help and fulfilling a dream, so to speak, you know, being a full-time firefighter, so.
Okay. Okay, someone want to make a motion then?
Sure, I will move to appoint Joseph Toldorian as a full-time firefighter, paramedic, effective January 1st, 2023, with his rate of pay consistent with the provisions of Article 7 of the agreement between the Town of Sturbridge and Teamsters Local Number 170.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor? Congratulations. Okay, next we have possible action on the point, on the appointment of Michael Jelineus as a full-time firefighter, paramedic, effective January 1st, 2023. His rate of pay will be consistent with provisions of Article 7 of the agreement between the Town of Sturbridge and Teamsters Local 170.
Mike is also a nationally registered EMT and also a member of the part-time staff currently. He's also enrolled in the Cal-Vall Academy in Leicester, also doing very well. No concerns. He will be certified to the level of Fire 1, Fire 2. And again, as we, after we get him through this phase of his training, we will be looking to get him into a paramedic program.
Okay, would you like to say anything?
Oh, absolutely. I want to thank you for the opportunity and I look forward to serving my community as a full-time firefighter.
Okay, questions from the board? Motion from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Michael Jelineus as a full-time firefighter, paramedic, effective January 1st, 2023. His rate of pay will be consistent with the provisions of Article 7 of the agreement between the Town of Sturbridge and Teamsters Local 170.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Congratulations.
Mary, is he here?
Mary Blanchard.
Did he come through town? Did you have him?
No. One of the few.
I was going to say, I don't think I go through Mary, it's weird.
I think he was after me, quite young. Okay, next we have possible action on the appointment of Jeffrey Hastings as a part-time firefighter, effective December 20th, 2022. His rate of pay will be consistent with provisions of Article 7 of the agreement between the Town of Sturbridge and Teamsters Local 170.
So with the now vacant spots in our call roster, Jeff is going to hopefully fill one of those. He's a nationally registered EMT, certified to the level of Fire 1, Fire 2. He's actually has over 12 years' experience in the industry. He is planning to attend a paramedic school on his own this spring and we're looking forward to having him as part of the department.
Any questions from the board? Motion?
I will move to confirm the appointment of Jeffrey Hastings as a part-time firefighter, effective December 20th, 2022. His rate of pay will be consistent with provisions of Article 7 of the agreement between the Town of Sturbridge and the Teamsters Local Number 170.
Seconded.
Discussion, all in favor? Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations again.
I always knock them over.
I know, I'm just getting all the 14 days in. I said the last thing.
Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on the ambulance rate increase, basic life support, advanced life support level 1, and advanced life support level 2. Chief?
In 2017, when I started, as, when I became chief, we did an ambulance rate evaluation and determined that we were significantly low in compared to the area communities. It's been about five years. I did another rate survey and again, because of the area communities raising their rates, we're very low again. When we talk about ambulance rates, I think it's important to know, especially for the community, that we don't bill the citizens. The taxpayers of the Town of Sturbridge do not get billed from the town, from the fire department, or anything related to the ambulance service. These ambulance rates are for the insurance companies and the bill goes directly to the insurance company. In the unlikely event there's a Massachusetts resident that does not have insurance, which is again highly unlikely, they will see a bill. However, we do not pursue those, those bills if those people cannot afford to pay us. So it's important to note that these ambulance rates are really geared toward the insurance companies. And in the event that the insurance companies determine they're not, that their payment rate, we don't balance bill the citizens either. So these rates are to kind of put us back in line with the area communities, help us to stay up with the costs that we're faced with. And what I did learn in doing this proposal is that the area departments are getting ready to raise their rates again as well. So we're, we're going to be right back where we were really, if you look at where we fall in the rate category, so.
Questions from the board?
That makes sense to me.
Yeah. Is that one, is not, not pursuing the billing, is that standard practice across all fire departments or are we more unique in that?
I think it's more the practice than the exception.
Okay.
There probably are some exceptions to it, but in my experience in talking to area chiefs and other chiefs that I have communicated with, it seems to be more the norm.
Some communities occasionally, if it's an out-of-town resident, might pursue the difference in the bill, but for their own residents, never.
It was kind of where I was headed with how many out-of-town residents we experience. I don't know what percentage of the calls
It's rare that the person doesn't have insurance and it's rare that the insurance doesn't cover, especially with our numbers on the low end. We're not probably hitting a lot of cases here, I don't imagine, where we're not getting the full reimbursement
Correct.
from the insurance company.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it from the board? Someone want to make a motion then?
Sure. I will move to accept the recommended rate increases for ambulance rate for basic life support, advanced life support level 1, and advanced life support level 2, as conveyed by the chief to the board.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
Those will go into effect January 1st.
Effective January 1st, I saw him in.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Have a safe and healthy New Year.
Thank you both.
And Chief, thank you.
Thank you. Chase. Each time it's fire, we get a big
I like that about him.
Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on the confirmation and appointment of Margaret Dowling to the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Committee for a term to expire December 19th, 2020.
So as I mentioned before, we, I had several interviews, Ms. Dowling had served on the housing trust prior and helps, helped establish this whole protocol and committee going forward, helped prepare the town for the articles. She represents, I think, a voice of the people, a very clear understanding of the needs that housing provides and the needs that we have in town. And so I think because of her background and helping us to get to this point of having this trust, it's appropriate to have Ms. Dowling on the, on the committee.
Okay, Margaret, you want to say anything or? Just thought I'd ask. Okay, anything from the board?
Thank you for doing
Motion?
I will make a motion to confirm the appointment of Margaret Dowling to the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Committee for a term to expire December 19th, 2023.
Second? Discussion? All in favor? Okay, next consideration and possible action on the confirmation and appointment of Diane Tripaso to the Municipal Affordable Trust Committee for a term to expire December 19th, 2024.
Mr. Tripaso brings tremendous experience from her background in planning and working with Jean in the planning department for a while. And that background in planning, I think, is going to be invaluable as we start to look at areas, locations, and appropriate use of our housing trust funding.
Okay, there are motion?
I will make a motion to confirm the appointment of Diane Tripaso to the Municipal Affordable Trust Committee for a term to expire December 19th, 2024.
Seconded.
Discussion, all in favor?
Thank you.
Diane, did you want to say anything?
And may I say she's tremendous on our opera subcommittee as well.
Thank you.
Busy lady.
Yes, she is. Little wotterwaffer, so I'm very happy about that.
Okay. Next consideration and possible action on the confirmation and appointment of Jamie Goodwin to the Municipal Affordable Trust Committee as the Board of Selectmen representative for a term to expire December 19th, 2024. Questions?
I wasn't in the interview, it was you. A little shifty.
I think he volunteered for it at the poll, so.
He totally went to the bus when I wasn't here.
I think it's just because Pete and I have to be on all the committees with Diane.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to confirm the appointment of Jamie Goodwin as the Board of Selectmen rep for the Municipal Affordable Trust Committee with a term to expire December 19th, 2024.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
And the rest of the appointments for that committee from the other divisions, planning and whatnot, we'll put on next meeting.
Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on the confirmation and appointment of Walter Hersi to the Historical Commission for a term to expire June 20th, 2025.
So I had the pleasure of interviewing Mr. Hersi, who's just a wealth of all Sturbridge knowledge and history, and I heartily recommend him for appointment historically.
Wally, you want to say anything? Okay.
Pleasure speaking with him about the history of the town.
Is there a motion then?
Sure, I will move to appoint or confirm the appointment of Walter Hersi to the Historical Commission for a term to expire June 20th of 2025.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Consideration and possible action on the confirmation and appointment of Ted Winglass, didn't know where to split the syllables, to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2024.
So Mr. Winglass came in and interviewed. I still have one more appointment to conservation and I'm still interviewing for that appointment, but I wanted to go ahead and appoint Mr. Winglass anyway at this point. He, his interview was, was very interesting. He comes out of a background in New Hampshire where he was on a Board of Selectmen in New Hampshire. He has a great approach to a balance of and understanding the balance of what rural communities need, but understands what we're dealing with along 90 and 84s for his development and that important aspect of conservation and that balance. And he really impressed me in his interview. I think he's relatively new to municipal government here in Sturbridge. I think this will be his first sort of entrance into it. And so I'm excited to appoint him to the Conservation Commission and have him join us.
Okay, questions from the board? Would you like to say anything? Okay, motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm the appointment of Ted Winglass to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Thank you, that's awesome.
Welcome, pardon?
Thank you.
Welcome. It's a lot of appointments.
A lot of interviews have been doing. All the years are right, we think all the years are right. Thank you, everyone. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
We cleared the docket.
It's only 7:19.
It's not getting ahead of ourselves.
Don't mess around here.
That went through my mind, Ian.
Chicken coops all over again before you
Okay, now. Consideration and possible action on a live entertainment license for Deep Roots Distillery USA LLC located at 559 Main Street, Unit 209, Fistale. Okay, now, nobody's here, but we don't always have people here for
So this one is relatively straightforward. She's bringing in some entertainment. Actually, thanks to Michelle, this one sort of got spotted. I don't think that there was a realization for something that simply needed a special license. So in an effort to not have her have a, lose out on her New Year's celebration, we encouraged her to apply for the license, which she did. We did confirm with the fire department, they have no concern. That was the one I was most concerned about before we had live entertainment. Jen indicated there was, there was absolutely no problem with ambiance entertainment for the evening.
Yeah, it's not going to be a nightclub or anything. It's just background music. It's just background music. Okay, anybody want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the live entertainment license for Deep Roots Distillery USA LLC located at 559 Main Street, Unit 209, Fistale.
I will second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay. Consideration and possible action on acceptance of furniture donation from a closing nonprofit office in Worcester, Mass. and permission for disposable of broken and damaged furniture that is being replaced.
So Robin was able to hook up with this organization that had some furniture to donate. We checked around. We have a few departments that can use some desks and whatnot, but in the meantime, because municipalities tend to be hoarders, we want to get rid of things that are broken and get them out of our way instead of hoarding. So with that, I'm asking for permission to accept the donations and also to get rid of things that are broken that we will not put in our auctions. We will be having those auctions we talked about for some of the things we can get some value back from. These are not things that have any, broken-legged desks are just not worth.
No.
Next bonfire.
Not a big item. Okay, is there a motion?
I will move to accept the furniture donation from a closing nonprofit office in Worcester and grant permission to facilities to dispose of broken and damaged furniture being replaced.
Second that.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, old business. Jamie?
None.
I have no old.
Ian? No business, Ian?
None.
Chase?
No, no.
I was just gonna read, look up a long poem to read to you guys about the Christmas spirit. Take a little bit of time. Uh, no, nothing.
I'd like to remind the board, noon on Wednesday, if anybody would like to come by, we're just having a little ugly sweater contest and.
Yeah, I said I'd come by, but I don't know what the illness is around here.
Yes, it has been like the plague in the building. This building's been like a Petri dish. So we've been cleaning everything, yes. Michelle wiped everything down and.
You guys just talked me right out of.
Please feel free. I'm figuring if you haven't gotten it yet, you're probably not gonna get it.
I'll invite us if you're gonna join us.
But I figured if I get it, I'll get it bad.
Yeah. So it's just casual, just pizza and ugly sweater.
Okay, sounds good anyways. Okay, correspondence. No, there were none in the packets, no. Approval of minutes, no, we didn't have any.
Nope.
Michelle, it's not a criticism. Citizens for, we don't have any of them either. Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Discussion, all in favor?